Let's call the special meeting, a special meeting of the San Mateo County Harbor District Board of Commissioners to order. It is May 8th, 2025, and it is 10 o'clock a.m. Let's start with Pledge of Allegiance. Bill, would you like to read this? Do you like to have a roll call? President Slater Carter, present. Commissioner Dormrat. Commissioner Matush.
Present.
Umpki, present.
Okay, do we have any public, seeing no one who, you know, member of the public here in the room, do we have public comments or questions online? Okay, moving right along then to the next item, Commissioner comments.
I have a comment.
Virginia.
Yep, so we had the annual Culinary Institute of America from Singapore on the students. We hosted them on Monday at the harbor. This is the 20th year of this event and partnership. And as usual, everyone had a great time. And I just want to give a shout out to Carrie Smith, who was wonderful and has always been a big part of presenting to the students about, you know, the fishing industry at Pillpoint Harbor and basically where their fish comes from. And the kids loved it. And Jim, thank you too for being there and Catherine as well. It was a great day.
And it was a great day. It was sunny and not too windy and even kind of warm. And I told them that they brought the sunshine and they were happy to do that. Good. Any other comments?
There was a nice drone show on April 27th. It was very well done. Look forward to the harbor district being able to follow that and at the same degree of number of drones and how complicated it was. I've been seeing a lot of articles on TV lately about the city of Oakland on overtime. And it made me reflect on the harbor district of how we've gotten overtime under control here. And just such a compliment to the management and staff here that I wanted to just call out everybody and say, thank you very much for your leadership and how we're able to do so much more with our funds than people have been unable to control their overtime. Initially, I'd like to start getting monthly updates on one of our tenants' progress on getting the restaurant open. So we've had somebody that's got a lease for a restaurant. And I'd just like to find out what's moving along in that direction that'll cause us to have another revenue-producing entity in the harbor. And lastly, I was one of many in the community that's received a visit from an upset member of the community that rants and raves and uses lots of profanity. I've been informed that the sheriff's department is working on this. The care team has been somewhat ridiculed in the response that they had. And that's it for now.
No, I have nothing.
Okay, then we will close the commission of comments and move along to the items. E1 for discussion and possible action of Maverick Surf Company lease amendment. Please introduce Jim Perlin.
Morning. This is a request that was submitted to the district from Maverick Surf Company, not to forgive their lease payments, but to allow them to provide a different amount of lease payments over time at, by, but by the end of, before June 30th, 2026, their lease, all their lease payments will be brought up to and paid in full and which allows them to have a little bit more operating capital during some slower times. This is, the district will also, instead of not give away the lease money for free or gift to public funds, will be charging the normal 5% on any overdue funds that would never regularly become due. So this lease, again, is not a lease or rent forgiveness. It's kind of a, more of a payment plan so they can spread their lease payments over time. And then there are different amounts depending on cash flow, be paid in full by June 30th, 2026. And I recommend that the board approve the lease amendment. The lease amendment has been drafted, reviewed by both parties and by district legal and approved as to content.
Do we have public comment online? Seeing none, we'll close the public comment, board comment.
Just a question. I, I assume that Maverick Surf Shop has been a tenant for some time. I, you know how long?
They've been a tenant for well, well over a decade, I believe.
Yeah, a long time, yeah.
They've been a great tenant and they bring a lot of value to the harbor district. They participate in a lot of the functions that we do at the harbor district. They promote ocean safety, which is one of our major missions here at the harbor district. So they haven't defaulted on any of their loan payments or lease payments, I should say. And then during COVID, when we had something very similar, they caught up on all our rents as soon as COVID was lifted and the store opened up again.
It's unfortunate that they're having difficulty. I guess our harbor has been less than stellar the last several years, with restrictions on mission.
Yeah, the foot traffic has slowed down because of no salmon season, crab season wasn't great this year, I go salmon season last year. So it hasn't been slower. And the weather doesn't help either. This last weekend, we had three boat launches because of the offshore weather. You get out there, you can't, don't launch your boat. So really slows down on the foot traffic. We are trying to do our best to increase the foot traffic and achieve our mission, such as the ocean safety there. We'll bring in a lot of people to the harbor that day and bring awareness to the harbor, but also achieve our mission of ocean safety and awareness. So and then we're looking at doing something in the fall with possibly a five or 10K race and associated activities. And then the Lighted Boat Festival brings in a lot more people, improving our facilities, the coastal trail and what we offer, the West Trail, fishing off the fishing pier, trying to get more people to come into the harbor itself.
Thanks.
I'll make a motion to approve the lease amendment, which is detached between the harbor district and the Maverick Surf Shop. I agree they've been a great tenant and a staple of the harbor.
The state of the economy, the state of the economy is tough for a homeowner. So do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Bill. Roll call vote, please. Commissioner Matush.
Aye.
Umpki.
Aye.
Aye. That's later, Tony. Yes. Moving to E2 nomination of Commissioner Virginia Chan Corrali to serve on the Special District Risk Management Authority Board of Directors.
SDRMA, the company that provides us liability coverage and workers' comp coverage, has a board of directors or Special District Risk Management Authority. And the election for four board members is up this year or are open for running. Three of them are, three of the incumbents are rerunning to fill their seats. And then one seat is completely open and the incumbent is not running. Commissioner Chan Corrali has indicated some interest in running for that board of director's position. And we have prepared to do that. We've prepared the, a resolution in accordance with the guidance provided by SDRMA, which this board must approve prior to Commissioner Chan Corrali running for that position. If the board does approve this resolution, will, the resolution will be signed and forwarded with the complete election package, which includes a statement of qualifications that Commissioner Chan Corrali will submit separately. It is a four-year obligation. They meet, they do not meet on our, our board meeting day, so they will not conflict with our board meeting and regular duties or her regular duties. One of the qualifications that she, besides the addendum is that it has to be a citizen of California, and she is. She's a citizen of San Mateo County, which qualifies for that. And we must be, as a district, in one of their four different programs of property and liability, workers' comp, health coverage, or risk management. And we cover all those from the, we get all those services from SDRMA. Staff's recommendation is that the resolution be approved. We support Commissioner Chan Corrali in running for the board position.
Have public comment?
Commissioner Chan Corrali, on the same day that we're giving blessings to the Pope.
Did we apply smoke?
I mean, I can talk this. I became interested in this position when Jim sent out the email regarding this, the election and kind of made phone calls to SDRMA to kind of find out what the landscape was. And basically, the, the current director who's not rerunning is, it's mainly for personal reasons and wants to spend more time with his family and grandchildren. And I thought that it was a good fit for my background, mainly because it's in the, it's basically a pool for risk mitigation and for insurance. And the harbor district actually is a great member in good standing. And, you know, we have property and liability, workers' comp, health benefits coverage, and, you know, all of the things that are really important to the harbor district. And SDRMA has really been there for the harbor district during, you know, some of the tough times in the harbor district's history with the board governance. So I just thought that giving back and trying to increase the membership, actually, I could probably help with that. My background also includes being a former, well, I used to handle, I used to run a or manage a group, a team in corporate services. And one of the problems of the team was retirement planning. So at one point, I was actually a Series 6 licensed to sell insurance in the state of California. So I understand, you know, the risk issues and the need to have insurance products. And I'm hoping that we can, SDRMA can grow its membership. They're currently about 600 to 600, 650, 650 members. And there are 3,400 special districts in California. So there are obviously some opportunities. And I think the better, the more members we have, the more stable the risk pool. And I think they provide a, SDRMA provides a great service and product. So I would love to be on that board.
Well, I would recommend it because, and I didn't, this is not a test, but you do know what a mod factor is, right? I bet most of the people on special districts boards do not understand mod factors and how they affect cash flow.
Well, there's only one person on the board right now that even has an insurance background. So it might be like the second person and the mine isn't like this guy. So.
So, yeah, it's, it's pretty important that we get somebody who understands the basic because our budgets are going to be tight. CSDA has great programs. We're promoting for safety. So we're according to the coast side, we've gotten the SDRMA award for like quite a few years now. And it's, it's, I think a lot of people are unaware of how important the insurance kinds of things are to your cash flow. So I would like to nominate Virginia.
Oh, Bill did. Okay, I will second that.
Oh, Bill, you better come. I'm sorry. I was just commenting that, you got a comment that I continue to be impressed by Mr. Chan Corrali and the dedication and the challenge of always volunteering for things. So my hat's, my hat's off to you, right?
Well, I think I can bring some value and I can certainly learn a lot.
I, I agree with that very much, yes.
I, I think there's, there would be some of the volunteerism, but I don't, we don't want her to find that.
I will move that we consider the nomination of Virginia Commissioner Chan Corrali to serve as the Special District Risk Management Authority Board of Directors.
Second, Tom?
Second.
Thank you. We'll call votes, yeah.
Aye.
Commissioner Chan Corrali. Aye. Yes.
Aye.
Moving on to E3, purchase of maintenance cart and outboard motor at Oyster Point Marina.
Good morning again. This is about supporting Oyster Point Marina with the purchase of a new maintenance cart and outboard motors for their workboat and rescue boat. The, but the, I, is the general manager again, put the cart before the horse and approved the purchase of both of these items already. But when, and they're actually budgeted in the, in the budget for that. But we didn't appropriate the money over to the for accounts, capital budget to actually purchase these equipment. And I need board approval to make those purchases and transfer those funds. So that their, older equipment is worn out, rusted out. It needs to be replaced, the maintenance cart. And then also the engines are past their normal expected lifespan. And these are larger and improved engines also that will enable them to better meet their missions over there. So I'm asking the board to, for staff recommendations for the board, the harbor commissioners approve an increase in the capital asset appropriations in the amount of $33,000 to be funded by available working capital. And again, that's for the purchase of a maintenance cart and outboard engines at Oyster Point Marina.
I'll second that. Oh, you can say that, okay.
I'll give, I'll give Bill the second. Roundy points.
South San in his district.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, roll call, please. Commissioner Chan Corrali. Aye. Yes. Commissioner Matush.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, moving right along to review and approve memorandum of understanding for marine debris. I'm assuming that's marine debris removal?
It ends in removal, yes.
Okay.
This is item E4 on the agenda and it's a, for the, staff is recommending the board approve a draft memorandum of understanding as attached between the district and South San Francisco with respect to marine debris. South San Francisco was having issues with vessels dropping anchor or being abandoned along their waterline, off their shores and in their area of responsibility. But they had no ordinance or rules that prohibited it. So the, there was no way of removing those vessels. Back in 2000, September 2024, South San Francisco adopted a new municipal code, their mooring ordinance, which prohibited those people from abandoning vessels along their coastline. But they lacked declaring those vessels as marine debris if they qualified as marine debris. South San Francisco does not have the expertise to look at vessels or inspect vessels or declare them as marine debris. But the harbor district does have that expertise. So they've asked us for assistance. This, our assistance, providing this service to them is also beneficial to us because those vessels are, caused both an environmental hazard to Oyster Point Marina and they also a navigational hazard to people who use Oyster Point Marina because their vessels are sunk or in the way of other navigational safety issues. So we, we're working with the city and MOU was drafted, as you can see, attached. The MOU has been approved by their council and our council. And it provides for us, for our harbor masters or deputy harbor masters to go out with them to evaluate a vessel to see if it qualifies as marine debris. And that's beyond any reasonable repair. Some of these vessels are already sank, so it's clear. Some of them are falling apart, masks are broken off. And once they're, once declared as marine debris, South San Francisco then takes ownership of the debris and disposes of that debris. This MOU authorizes us and authorizes, to authorize us to help the city in doing that. One of the issues in the original draft MOU that was changed was the indemnification. There was just a standard indemnification clause in the MOU saying that we would indemnify the city. And that was changed to, since we're doing it on their behalf, they should indemnify the district for any lawsuits resulting out of this activity. And that, that was changed and updated in the MOU. Staff recommends that we change our, sign the MOU and start assisting the city of San Francisco and cleaning up their waterfront.
Comment, Virginia? Yes, so this, Jim, in the back of the question, I just, the first sentence says the city of San Francisco. Do you mean South San Francisco there?
Yeah, you're right.
Okay, because I, because I didn't know if San Francisco leaving debris along the Oyster Point coast.
I got lazy to put south.
No worries, no worries. That, thanks for that. And then, so is, so this, I know there's a draft MOU. Is this going to be added on to the agreement?
It'll be, it's my intent to wrap it into the updated 2018 agreement.
Great. And I just want to thank you, Jim, and also John and the staff who work over there at Oyster Point for the work that you've done. I just, I think from what I've seen and just what I'm hearing, the relationship with the city of South San Francisco is, I think, very positive and one of the strongest that I've seen in a long time. So I totally applaud what y'all are doing and what they're doing over there at Oyster Point and the relationship we have with the city.
Great partnership.
Yeah.
James, harbor master James Smith.
Yeah.
And this is the harbor master Jacob Wall. You did a great job.
Yeah, really great job. So please help me.
That's good. Please, please pass on our things because it looks, the harbor at Oyster Point looks better than it has in the long term. Good. Well, let's, do we have a motion? We have a motion? Oh.
I wanted to make comment. I wanted to make comment.
Oh, okay.
Just concerned about who pays. So this won't increase our cost or anything. And then as far as our save budget, it's not going to impact our save of our tenants in the existing harbor.
No, it's a completely different save, or it's the same state save budget that money's coming out of, that they're applying for, but it's their portion of the save. And the only additional, there's no additional cost to the district because it's just, it's time for us during our normal workday.
I'd like to echo Commissioner Chan Corrali's comments that, you know, the feedback I give is very positive. And I do talk to people, but go out to the Bay Trail frequently and they say, boy, this is really great. I mean, they really appreciate the way it looks, the way it's maintained, features that are out there. And I just, I'll let you know, I did see a post on everything, I don't know if it was everything South City or South San Francisco website that had a picture, they actually had a barge in there purely recently removed, which I can't read. I'm assuming that this, this inspection really applies to boats where there's a question whether it's in working or not.
These are smaller pleasure craft. Not a barge.
I do get comments from people all the time that walk the Bay Trail and say, when are they going to clean that up? And I have to explain that, well, it's a process. They don't want to go out and just take somebody's house that they're living on. So it's, they're, they are kind of managing with, well.
Well, so and on top of what Bill just said, hey, who is going to be doing, is it marine debris? Is that the name of the company? Oh, in caps, that's that.
No, it's just marine debris.
Okay, I didn't know that.
That's part of the ordinance.
Okay. Oh, I get, okay.
So then, once it's, once it qualifies as marine debris, then the city of South San Francisco could treat it as the.
From the harbor district will determine that, like, is it James and?
Largely, yeah.
I don't, I don't know. I don't know what that.
It'll be somebody from that Oyster Point Marina staff, either the harbor master, deputy harbor master, or excuse me, assistant harbor master or qualified deputy harbor master.
Okay. I mean, and I don't, this is fascinating. I'm sorry for asking so many questions. But do we, I mean, we, is there, are there qualifications that our staff, I mean, they obviously mean it, but just in general, anyone who wanted to be involved with this have to make, even make this determination? I mean, how do you, how do you get qualified to make this determination, yes?
If it's not, if it's not a very obvious situation, like a lot of, a lot of vessels are just obviously in such disrepair that they're really no longer, you can consider it a boat. They're just marine debris. They've got no means of propulsion, no mast. If it's a sailboat, no engines or, they're in very poor condition or they're partially sunk.
Yeah, that's easy to determine.
Yeah. And our, our staff are able, with their experience, as harbor masters, harbor master, are able to make those determinations under those cases if they're more questionable and the vessel's in fairly good condition. But we're unable, the city of South San Francisco unable to get a hold of the owner or whatever the case might be, it would not be treated as marine debris at that point.
That's a whole different process.
Exactly. If it's, if it is a question, we would require, we would not feel comfortable determining that and would require the South San Francisco to get a surveyor, marine surveyor. And to be clear.
But you would make, we would make that determination whether or not they should even get a survey?
Yes, yes. We, we would tell them.
We'd always lean towards seaworthy.
Yeah, yeah.
And to be, and to be clear, these boats, you know, if anybody's ever talking with any of the commissioners or anybody about these boats and why they're not being removed, et cetera, in the first place, they're not on our controlled area. They're outside of our harbor altogether. So there, we have, we're assisting South San Francisco with this challenge. And then there is, you know, a process that has to go, have to, we have to go through legitimately or they have to go through legitimately to ensure that, you know, they're doing everything right with other people's property, private property. And again, we do have a place to have these boats towed into temporarily. And South San Francisco will be handling all of the boats that are necessary to meet the DBW requirements with regard to who they choose to demo the boats. They have to get three, they have to get three quotes so that it's a fair process and not, and they are not just choosing arbitrarily a very expensive. Yeah, demo company. It's the same process we go through as well for the DBW save program.
So we probably, do we have a, Jim, do we have a meeting that we need, a liaison meeting that we need to have soon?
We're going to have one this summer. It was going to be a walking tour. So we're waiting for the better weather to kick in.
I don't know if the, if the, if the liaison, their liaisons, and they probably know, I don't know if they know any about this, that they should be.
It's going to go, once we, once we approve it, it's going to go to their city council for approval, I believe. I'm not sure on that, but they're checking to see at what level it has to be approved. I'm not sure on that, but they're checking to see at what level it has to be approved.
I'll make a motion to authorize the general manager to sign the memo, memorandum of understanding between the harbor district and the city of South San Francisco with respect to marine debris determinations.
Is it stated harder?
Yes.
Aye.
Commissioner Zemki? Or Chan Corrali?
Aye.
Prior to the adjourning, I like these tabs here that tell us where we are. The mass of whatever.
Noted.
I'll second that motion to adjourn.
Okay, any, any objections to adjourning? Motion here.